It's 6:30. I call a meeting to water. First item on the agenda is public comment. If you have something you'd like to say, please come to the podium. Say your name and address. You have three minutes. Address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Anybody interested? No. Okay. Item number three. No smoking policy for recreational fields public hearing. So I officially open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak to the proposed, um, policy that we put in place or would like to put in place, come to the podium. No. Anybody from the board who'd like to speak to it? Town administrator?
Well, I was just going to say that the proposed policy entitled tobacco use on town-owned property, the purpose of which is to prohibit the use of tobacco products on town-owned recreational property. And in accordance with the policy, that would also be areas adjacent to the recreational field, so it would include parking areas and the pavilion that would overpark. Any discussion among the board as to when you might want the effective date to be, assuming you're going to --
Are we going to put up, I'm sorry, are we going to put up signs then throughout a couple places in the park and other recreational places? How many recreational areas do we have?
Three.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So Stevens Field, the town field, and the little park. So personally, I think it should be effective when we put up the signs.
Exactly. So we have a target date?
It could be July 1st, provided that Steve Bullock can get the signs that fast, but I think he already has them. He does.
All right.
July 1st?
July 1st.
Sure. That would give them enough time to install them. Okay. So let's say July 1st, 2019?
Yes.
Any comments? Concerns? Complaints? I move to adopt the tobacco use on town propping policies presented to be effective July 1st, 2019, and to instruct the highway department to post appropriate signs at the town's recreational fields. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number four.
Closing.
Oh, sorry. That's right. Thank you. I officially close the hearing. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Uh, item number four. Barb, Asha, uh, energy committee.
I'm here to represent the, uh, energy committee, uh, and update you on the work we've been doing on the solar arrays. Just to remind everybody here, the, um, March a year ago, the town adopted a warrant article that allowed us to, uh, pursue looking for sites for a solar array somewhere in the town, um, particularly for the public safety complex and the transfer station. And since the highway department is the other, um, building, the other buildings that are associated with New Hampshire Electric Co-op, those are the ones that we're looking at, is trying to find a solar array site that will support energy production for those, not for those buildings, because it would be feeding back into the grid and then we would get compensated for the energy that we produce. Uh, we've been working with Revision Energy, and I have John Dunster here from Revision to answer any questions you have, which might be, I'm not a very technical person on this, so he's my backup on that. Um, so what I wanted to do is take you through kind of what we've been doing the last month. Um, the first piece, first map that's here is what was sent out to you, but I'll explain it a little bit. Um, we initially looked, we're looking at, initially, all last year, we looked at sites that were on the roofs of the buildings. We looked at the public safety complex, we looked at the transfer station. Revision gave us, uh, proposals for solar installation on both those roofs, and, uh, it was decided that we would not be looking for a rooftop array, uh, for safety reasons and for other reasons. And so we've decided to look for a ground mounted array. And so the first obvious, first place we would look, we decided to look at was at the transfer station, which had some open ground. And the first one to look at was at the old landfill site, which on this, this, uh, picture is shown in red. And then there's a blue overlay, and that was where we thought we would probably put the array if we could. Uh, we raised that with Revision. Revision went to their investors, and the investors said that that was not possible site. And this is happening all over the state. Even though the state is supporting the idea of, uh, landfill solar arrays, um, people are too worried about what, what's in those old landfills. So we've ruled that out, so you can mark that one through. The second area, second one we are looking at is down here in orange, and it's at the entrance to the land, uh, transfer station on the right. It's below the, the little garden, and to the right, the property that is between the road into the transfer station and the sand hill on the, on the, in the highway department. Um, the, as you can see on this map, there's a town trail that goes through, through that, right through that property. And across the street in yellow is, uh, the, the boundaries of the school board, I mean, not school board, the West River School District property, which continues on down to Mass Way. The, um, area with the, um, uh, baseball field is, is highway department as well. So this particular, uh, site is, um, a site that is both highway department and transfer station property. If you, if you go to the next page, you'll see that we're looking at, that, that shows up in the top right corner, and down in the bottom left corner are two other sites that we're looking at, and I'll show you those in detail in just a minute, that are here right here, the public safety complex. So if you go to the third page, you'll see kind of a rough estimate of where a solar array at that link, at that site in, uh, at the transfer station would go. One of the things we ran into was, uh, the fact that there's a leach field on that site, and the leach field's at the transfer station. And so Randy Stevens and Toby Van Anton went out using the old maps for it and poked around for a couple hours with poles and whatever, and located the, the leach field. So on the next page, you'll see how I've laid out, I took, uh, John Dunster's solar array picture, and I laid it out on this map to show you where the leach field site would be in relation to that, uh, to the leach field itself in orange. And, um, so you can see that if we put a, a solar array on that site, we would have to cut a number of trees on that site, and probably down to the, all the way down to the road and all the way to the sand, uh, the sand hill, and, um, and even that out. We've had, uh, Don Quigley, the forester in town, take a look at that site. There's some big pines on the, on the site. Um, there's, there are a number of trees, but they're not terribly valuable trees in terms of if we logged it, that wouldn't necessarily produce, produce much income back from the logging for that. But it is, it would be reasonable to, to consider logging that property and produce, and would produce a, a large enough area for a solar array. So I think that's a, a good, a good site, still it's a good possibility if, if we're willing to cut the trees there. We brought the, uh, energy committee brought the conservation commission in to look at this site. Uh, they walked it because of the trail that goes straight right through it, and, um, we discussed it. Um, my understanding from them is that it would be, it would not be a great loss if that site was, was cleared, because, um, they, they're looking for more open space in town anyway from, uh, the, the town is pretty heavily forested, so it would be okay to have that area forested. But we still need to have, leave enough room so the trail that goes by there could continue to go through, because that's the connector between, uh, that's the entrance into the town forest and back to the land, um, the landfill and the transfer station. Okay, so that's the leach field site. Then we started looking around for sites that would not interfere with town trails, and we found the, looked at the site just west of this building, right on the other side of the parking lot, and just, just beyond the, the, uh, rain, the swale over there that collects the water from the parking lot. And this site is, um, all wooded. It, the topography is such that it's almost divided in half. Half of it is about, is on, is ledge, and is about 10 to 15 feet higher than the, the area that's closest to the, to the public safety complex. Um, I, when I brought Don Quigley over to look at that, he looked at the site and said there's considerable red oak on that site that could be logged and probably be profitable in the sense of, uh, red oak is highly, is in high demand. So we might be able to offset, uh, some, maybe all of the cost of logging by clearcutting that site. Um, if you look at the next page, the next page shows John Dunster's, Revision's layout of how the solar array would go on that site, but as he and I were talking just a little while ago, it would, they would adjust it however they needed to, to fit the site, fit the topography of the site. It might be that, uh, the, some of those modules would go, um, go further, a little bit closer down to George Bennett Road. Uh, it might be split up in some ways, but they, that would have to get up on the ground to really look and see how that would be laid out. Um, anyway, I think that's a, that's, that's a good site. It's just a matter of how, how expensive it will be to cut, and whether it's, uh, an issue at all for end line. We've talked to Karen Rossi, she doesn't seem to think there's any problem with that site in terms of other obligations for the site. So, uh, that's where that site is. We get, we've gotten a lot of questions about Stevens Field as a possible option, because it is flat, it's large enough, and it's, it's, has no trees on it. So we did ask Revision to sort of give a layout of what the solar panels would look like on that site, so you can see a picture of what it might look like there. In some ways, that's an ideal site, but of course, the Stevens Field is currently being used for recreation, and the town would have to make a decision about whether we want to give up that practice field or not, if they use, if they wanted to go in that direction. So that's pretty much where we're at right now. The idea behind this is to try to produce enough energy from whatever array we get to cover our costs, and maybe even then some, um, from, for all three of the New Hampshire Electric Co-op buildings and meters that we have. Um, I was going to ask John if you would speak to how much that would produce, and maybe the cost, how much we might get from that, if you want, if you can.
So it's Dunster Revision Energy. Um, looking at the buildings that were described and the usage for those buildings, there's about 160,000 kilowatt-hours a year. It's ranged from 142, it's more up around 160 now. The net metering, um, policy now in the state makes it so that if we could develop a project of 100 KW AC, that it would be very close to that. It's somewhere between 147 and one maybe 70 kilo, 1,000 kilowatt-hours a year, so it'd be very close. The beauty of that is allows us the net meter that, what is ever not used behind the building. So we really want to find a three-phase location, essentially a higher energy location like the transfer station or this building, because that saves on the installation size. And then we need to identify about an acre of land that would be, have good exposure to the sun. And looking at it real quickly, and basically if we didn't include, and the reason we don't want to include the clearing into our side of the project is because that is known as, it's not qualified for the 30% tax credit, it's unqualified expenses in the project, so it would fall on the investor, and therefore the rate would go up. Basically, we looked at a couple of the sites, we looked at projects that we've been doing around the state, and we've determined if we can find a decent site near three-phase, we could come up with something that would be, uh, in a net metering situation where about 30% was net metered, this town would save somewhere between 1,500 and $3,000, depending on exactly how much was net metered. So that would be the savings to the town. Behind the meter is more, that's more valuable, because we're actually offsetting that, the full charges, and what we send back to the grid is discounted, uh, insult to the co-op at a lesser rate. So to give you some scope of that, you're paying about 16 cents when you're buying it from them, and then what you're selling back, you're selling back around 12 cents. We looked at the PPA rate was going to be right in that 12 cents area, so you're not losing anything from the standpoint of what you're selling back, but you're, you're behind the meter, what the savings would, as I said, be somewhere between 1,500 and $3,000 a year.
For all the ones that you mentioned here, I understand that you're trying to get so many kilowatt-hours and so forth. Is there any site that's expandable beyond what you?
Um, well, um...
I'm looking down the road. I know we're burning now, but what if?
And actually, we're, we're actually, uh, using less electricity than we were a year ago.
Yes.
Since we added these LEDs in both the big buildings, um, it's actually dropped down. So we're saving money right now, hopefully we can do more. Can you answer that, John?
Yeah, so the expandability of the solar, I mean, these are going to be tight, they're going to be just kind of shoehorned into there. I mean, you're obviously going to have to be clearing, we're going to be grading, so they really would lend themselves to being, thinking about expandability with the limitations that we're dealing with. Um, you know, if you were looking at someplace adjacent to, or someplace where you might have three to five acres, you might want to drop 100 KW today, and then depending on what happened in the town over time, you could certainly, if you're next to three-phase, drop another 100 KW at some point, but right now, I don't think we have the flexibility to do that.
Over time, you could do a second site, couldn't you?
Oh, absolutely, yes. Yeah, so that, any incentives or legit, or anything like that, as long as it's behind a different meter than what we did before, you could add it and get your incentive. So expandability on one site might be difficult, adding another site wouldn't be no.
Ms. Rossi?
Yes. So first, I want to apologize for spraying this on you last minute. I've had some personal things, so I've been out of the office a lot lately. Um, on the public safety complex lot, um, it's actually tighter than you thought, because you have the highway right away, you have to take into consideration.
Okay.
You have the old Bennett Road right away, which goes here and then through here.
Mm-hmm.
And the Pascal's driveway right away. So you actually, not even, you're just under an acre now, and you're going to lose this right away, this right away, and this right away.
So, let me show you this.
Now, I haven't seen this, so maybe you've already taken that into consideration.
Right, this is, this is what, what John laid out, so, and you were saying that it could, it could be flexible.
Yeah, you're going to have to shrink this, because this right away goes, it's, we'll have to do some research to figure out exactly what this right away is. So it goes here, and then it goes here to here, and then the Pascal's driveway is someplace in here, too.
It's, it goes straight up that way, I think.
Okay. So we're all, we've all cleared?
Yeah.
So you might have to configure, there's some more to make it all work?
Yeah, so the, so the answer is, I'm sitting at a computer or designers, and we're putting this on a piece of property, right?
Yeah.
And we get out here, so if you could imagine, if we just moved it down there, we would create, because I walked back just recent, you know, literally, so...
Yeah.
The beauty of this, it's not set in that stone, we could add a little bit to this row and take a little bit from those rows.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to bring the right aways all into, because they're, even though it's not used, it's still there.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other question?
So are you proposing right now to build one solar array?
Yes.
Excuse me, I have one more thing.
Yep.
There's a drainage easement for this building in this area here, too.
Well, this, this whole area, we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch.
Okay. Because it's a, it's an easement, so we'd have to figure out what that is, too.
Does the easement go beyond this drainage?
We'll have to look at, we'll have to look into that, but that's another thing to...
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, so we're only talking about picking one site that would handle, uh, 100 kilo, 100...
Kilowatt AC.
Yeah.
Be like 124, 130 kW decent.
Yeah.
Couple of, a question, why, if we're looking at the public safety complex, what we were just discussing, um, which way would they be angled? Do you know that at this point?
Well, we've got them on, on here showing that...
I'm talking about the...
Oh.
The degree?
Yes.
So when we do a ground mount, we typically want to be about 30 degrees.
Would they be facing the road? I'm concerned about reflection, people driving by, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that's a great question, and we face that all the time. So the beauty, solar panels actually draw the sun in rather than reflect the sun.
Okay.
Um, we, when we go to, to, uh, projects at Pease Airport or any other airport, that's a question. We actually have to go to the FAA for a glare report, and solar panels usually don't have any problem with that.
Okay, because, um, from my point of view, I probably would leave more to the transfer station site, and not have something so visible right here by the public safety complex, because I do worry about, um, the aspect of somebody's driving by and throwing a brick. I hope they wouldn't do that kind of thing, but if it's more property that's behind the transfer station, there's less opportunity. It's just, so I, I hope the committee looks at that as well, for those issues, things that, you know, will go wrong, go wrong kind of thing. Uh, especially, we just talked about reflectivity, so there's not a major issue, but vandalism could be an issue. And it is a nice wooded zone by the public safety complex as well, it, it has an ambiance here to have that wooded zone.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it normally be fenced off, or not?
So when this particular size, when you get into a project this size, you, you have the choice as the town whether you want to fence it or not. It's not done by electric code. Once you get over 300 KW, you have to fence it in. So you don't have to fence it in. If you, if you've driven down 125 where Brentwood is, and you see that, all that, that we didn't put that array in there, it's not fenced in, it's wide open, nobody's had, they haven't had any problems with it. Certainly a little bit more, a lot of tra, more traffic there, so maybe that helps in terms of, but, so you could choose to fence it in if you wanted to.
Would there be any advantage to having it more immediately adjacent to the building that uses the most power?
Yes, absolutely.
So it would be better from that standpoint to have it next to this building?
That's correct, yeah. Behind the meter, whatever, the most consumption behind the meter is the most valuable to the town.
Ms. Rossi?
And I, and I did get to say to Bill, and Bill hummed my first exchange to him, was that we have tried to be a good neighbor to the Pascal's over here over the years, because it is a lot of light and a lot of noise, and we've been trying to be very good about the trees over there, so I just want you guys to keep that in mind, that we have tried in the past to be a good neighbor. We've had some issues when this building was first built with noise and light, and you can't see up in there, so that would be an issue if we did cut these trees for them. What about behind this building?
Um, we looked at that, and behind the building, we've got, it's a fairly narrow area between the building and the power line, the Electric Co-op power line, and also some of that has already been designated for memorial trees. There's, there are a bunch of trees there that were planted, and, and so there's sort of that area, but it's, it's a fairly small area. The one area that I haven't mentioned that we, we talked about, that we haven't done much with is, and I'll show you a picture of it, is actually behind the Stevens Field. It's not, it's more like two-thirds of an acre than, than that, so I don't know if it's big enough.
Oh.
Instead of being there, and you wouldn't have too many trees there.
You can't tie in...
But we have a small investment in that, you know, and John has a chance to look at the arrays for that, so that would be large enough. So, go ahead.
Any other questions?
This, excuse me, I'm sorry. Is this array about the same size as the one that we looked at in Elliott?
Uh, Elliott's slightly larger.
Slightly larger.
Slightly larger, yeah. And I'm thinking theirs is on the landfill.
Yes, it is.
When I looked at it, it was on the landfill, yeah.
Yeah.
And how they got it through, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let me just be clear. You can build on the landfills. What happens with the bent landfills is, the, the way that you need to bend, you can't penetrate? Oh, sorry.
Everything.
You can't, when you're building on a landfill, you can't penetrate the landfill if it's capped landfill, so what you literally end up building is these big cinder blocks, and that process is very expensive. So what happens is you drive that cluster up, and then the PPA rate goes way up as well. And, uh, one of the things that I've mentioned a few times is that part of the whole process right now is the, obviously, the tax credits to the owner of the system, and this year, the tax credits until the end of the year are 30%. Next year, they go down to 26%, and then 22, so there's certainly a damage to getting that built now, because the PPA rate that we're talking about is based on a 30% tax credit.
So that's why we've been, that's why we've been so anxious to try to get this moving.
Don't, don't leave it on.
Oh, the question is for me.
Question is for you.
I'll stay here.
So is there no advantage for us to build? Because the two biggest uses are the transfer station and this building. Is there no advantage to having a, an array for this building and an array for the transfer station? Because then that particular usage is behind the meter. I don't like giving away stuff. I'd rather have, you know, if we can, uh, find arrays that fit this particular structure and also the transfer station, would that be a benefit to us? Is there something I'm missing in terms of when you split up two arrays instead of having a big one, two smaller ones?
So if you were, if you were a company or a taxpaying entity, I would say that's exactly what you want to do.
Yeah.
The problem is, when you're not, when you don't have tax liability, what happens is now you're looking at two separate systems. So you have engineering for two separate systems, you have interconnection for two systems and all that, so we'll lose the, the efficiencies of building one larger system.
But how, when does that...
And it would cost you more.
Well, how much more? I guess that's, I think the thing that I want to consider is in terms of how much does this cost the town over a period of time?
Mm-hmm.
Because in terms of the scenario that I think you guys are talking about, actually somebody else owns it for a period of time, and then at some point, we can have an option to buy it or whatever.
Correct.
And, uh, also in terms of looking down the road for 10 years, is it better for us just to buy it outright and just to do it ourselves versus have somebody own it, get the 30%, and then we buy it at some point?
So...
There's a lot of numbers there, so...
There, there are, and it's something, I actually have a cash flow that I could show you, but the truth is, when I'm working with a nonprofit, 90, 90% of the times, even if they have the money, I tell them, "Don't do it. Let somebody else take that 30% tax credit," because what's going to happen is, they're going to take, you're, they're going to install the system, the maintenance, and if there's going to be issues in anything, it's going to be in the beginning, right? And then BRRRR is not going to be right, whatever the case may be, let that be somebody else's headache. But more importantly, if you look five years later, and you could buy, this system, I think, has a buyout at 60% of value, so 40% discount. You benefited slightly, it may, you know, 15,000 dollars a year is not a lot of money, but you also didn't put anything out for it. So then you're, you're about 40% number that you're buying, and then I would jump right in and buy it as soon as you can.
I guess it would be important to see those when you guys figure out what it is. And I'm, I'm inclined, I'm, just like John, I would rather see it at the transfer station. The only concern I think we have, I think the highway department has expressed this, in terms of not cutting into their sand pile, their particular space. So I think that would be important. So I don't know if you can maneuver it around there? And you said you identified the leach field, what about the septic tank? Is that not in the same area? Is that...
It's not in the same area.
Okay.
It's over, closer to the building, is my understanding. So, yes, that would be... I know for a fact that that's the least favorite site for the conservation commission. If you want to ask the conservation commission about that, you can't, since they are here. But I think, um, the other advantage to that site at the transfer station that, uh, Don Quigley mentioned, was he thought having this, the solar array sort of associated with recycling, you know, that sort of the educational, um, you know, all of that, that that was a positive kind of, you know, we could even do some kind of, the energy committee could even do some educational stuff with that there. So that's another reason for doing it.
That is a really good point, because I'll go back again, you know, when we made the Elliott visit, we saw the array, we saw the composting activity, we saw a lot of things, it was all about their environmental efforts, and it was pretty neat to see. I said, uh, you know...
One of the things, and I don't remember who said it, but you said something about access to three-phase. So in terms of the town, those are the only two places we get out three-phase power? Is there other places?
I don't know if it's the only two.
For the electric, for the co-op, I think it is.
Okay, so those are the two points. So can you explain, John, in terms of what's the technical, why do you need access to three-phase power? Is that to feed it back, or?
Exactly, yeah. So for, for the internet, the power is developed off the array itself, at, at, at a three-phase...
Oh, okay.
System. And like, when we do it on residential, we have to have the inverter that dumbs it down to single-phase. Basically, put a single-phase inverter, and it loses efficiency. We want to keep things as high voltage as we can.
Can we ask the Conservation Commission why?
Sure.
Bill, can you respond to why you think that's the, was it the worst site that you would pick? You cut down a bunch of red oaks over here, aren't they important to you?
Put words in his mouth.
I, I need to state that I'm speaking as an individual, not as the Conservation Commission. We did have a briefing, the Commission did have a briefing by the Energy Committee a couple of weeks ago. But things have developed in terms of a couple of these sites since then. The major problem that we have with the transfer station, and it's, it's not a total showstopper, but having to cut all those trees between the transfer station property and the sand pile, and still have a reasonable access to the town forest by trail, is, it's less than ideal. The parcel here next to, to the safety complex, it's, sure, trees would have to be cut, and it's close to the road. It's not ideal, but it doesn't impact the, the interests of the Commission, as I understand them anyway, as much as the transfer station would. And then, it was just very recently that the option of Stevens Field came up. And not knowing how heavily that is used for practice, and whether not having that available would be a significant loss to the users is not something I can address. But certainly from an environmental standpoint, that's really my strongly preferred location.
Bill, can you speak to the, because Mark Shaw is also not using the field itself, but up on the ridge? Can you speak to that?
Well, I think she mentioned that there would be a, a reduction in the size of the array, and therefore in its production. I haven't staked out on the ground where, where one could put this. I am assuming you're wanting to stay clear of any of the athletic field.
It's just, that's another thing she showed us, so... Is that something that the board would like the Conservation Commission to discuss and then come back to us in terms of...
Absolutely.
With the Conservation Commission willing to do that? Uh-oh, she's back.
I would just, as an employee and a resident, before we, I'm not saying we shouldn't explore Stevens Field, but if we want to build a new town office, we would make sure we get something concrete as where that's going to go. Because if we want to revisit Stevens Field and we can't because we put a solar array, that might tie our hands.
I think the board has instructed us to look at a single-story building, a two-story building, and a two-story building with a parish house.
Right. But I'm just saying, until you get something passed by the voters, you don't want to tie, continue to keep tying your hands. That's my suggestion.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is I think that Stevens Field is still a playing part for a couple of scenarios that are kind of moving around. It could soften it off the plier, as far as...
TCVC recommended that you don't continue to explore that.
But the voters still have to...
Yeah, you know.
That's just my suggestion.
Mr. Tapp.
Tom Tappin, 187 Stepstone, New York. I'm looking at the map of the survey of the conservation easement, which goes around the public safety complex, and on which there's a 7.9 acre section that was carved out. It's not part of the conservation easement. That has the public safety complex on it, the soccer field. And going north of the soccer field, it goes past the right-of-way. And another, the furthest distance looks like it's maybe as much as 300 feet beyond the electric power right-of-way. There's a very large area there.
Let me show you the map. I was showing them. See if it's the same thing you're looking at.
All this here.
Yeah, we can pull that out. It's this. It's, that's what you were looking at. Is that what, is that the area you're talking about?
So that's this little area here, that's the power line.
That's the power line. This is Stevens Field.
So this is the power line. So it goes all the way back here.
Yeah.
Which is all area that was carved out of, not part of conservation easement. And at the time, that was considered for future expansion of buildings or other town needs.
For well.
Is there a well on it?
Nope, but that's what Dick Wellington kept it out specifically for, possible town water.
Okay. I'm, I'm not saying that that's where you should put it. I'm saying it sounds like there is additional area available that maybe it hasn't been considered because it wasn't known how far that goes.
I don't think that's true. I was going to see if there's a trail on that. Bill, you know, the trail, there is a trail. Trails go up, Stevens Field up here.
Right, so it's...
So this here, so... So this would be, it goes, looks like it goes along the edge of that. Is that right?
Maybe we can do that offline?
That's, that's all I wanted to point out.
And also, isn't there some trees out there, Bill, in the section that he's talking about? Some trees, I don't know, chestnuts or something?
There, the chestnuts are in the cleared area here behind the...
But I thought there was something out back that...
Well, when you get beyond the transmission line...
Yeah.
Then, John's right, you're not in easement, but you are in town forest. So, you know, do we want to encroach on the town forest?
Okay.
I'm not sure we do, but... I'm going to say, pointing out that it seems to be legally available. Yes.
Okay. Well, conservation doesn't need till next month anyways, officially. Any other questions?
Well, we'll be, we'll be getting, looking at the logging for what it would cost, and get somebody to look at those sites, and we'll further investigate that site that John mentioned. And we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Karen Ross, Planning and Zoning Administration?
So I'm here to update you on the planning and zoning and building department and the Lee Fair.
There we go. Yeah, already.
I know. So the building department, so far to date, 8,636,000 in project costs. This was as of June 10th. 58,425 in permit fees and 418 permits. So on this track, we will go over what we did last year. So far. Which is good, right? As far as the planning board goes, there's a lot of miscellaneous stuff going on, but I will highlight on the bigger stuff. The last UNH property has finally sold and is occupied by a mental health office specializing in children. Between the lines, or it's called, I believe. Site work continues at the Irving Station, the old mobile site. They're advertising for tenants, not really, they have, they have no tenants yet. They are not, they're advertising for tenants, but they still have a long, probably the rest of the year to go for the site work before they construct the building. So they'd like to get them, but they don't have any yet. The material for that site has come from the vacant site next to Life Storage, which is also going to be another, it's an approved storage building, and they are going to start breaking ground the end of next month, once the site work is finished off. They will be starting breaking ground there. Progressive Electric is before the planning board right now to add another additional outbuilding for storage. They're located on the Barrington Lee line up in the woods where the cell tower is. Forestland Campground, I don't know if you guys remember, they came here, they're all approved, site walk happened, permit, they went through the planning board process, no problems, all done. Building is all shelved, and now they're just doing the inside. All the farms are in the process, all the farms are in the process of coming forth to have site clean review. We've been working on the farm stand, the permanent farm stands and the farms throughout the winter, all going along. Chestnut Farms has one house left to be sold, and they're closing the end of July. And that is on Chestnut Way, and then that housing development is all built out. Chimberg Builders has started theirs, they're on their fifth house out there. First four sold, pre-lots are already sold. As you know, the neighbors appealed the planning board's decision for Bedrock Gardens. We've gone to court twice for that. The first court hearing was for an interim schedule, which the court did not grant. But what they did instead was they gave us an earlier court date, so we actually went to court last week, last Wednesday, for that. And now we're awaiting the judge's decision on that. And then there's still a 30-day appeal period before any work can begin. So once the decision is issued, there's 30-day appeal period, and then they can start working on the parking lot and addressing the planning board's conditions of approval. Zoning Board's been very busy, miscellaneous things, nothing really big, just like, last month was a farm stand setback variance, which now that farm stand will be coming before the planning board. Nothing too major there, but very busy. But nothing, no new subdivisions, which is great. Do you guys have any questions? Sure?
Water line?
Water line, we have not had, it's last I heard, it was going to bid in the fall to build in the spring. Fall is when you get the best prices, so they were going to bid it in the fall and construct it in the spring. What school is out?
That's predicated on what's happening behind the Irving, right?
No.
No, not really?
No. Has nothing to do with it?
Nothing to do with it.
They, they, we were told by the state that they are going forward with the project, even if none of the current property owners want to connect.
The what, the only difference, so the Irving gentleman has to put in fires, so if there's no water line, they have to put in fire, fire cisterns.
Yeah.
If the water line comes through in conjunction with their development, they can just tie in for hydrants. So it's a large savings for them.
Okay.
But it has not, one has nothing to do with the other.
I thought he was trying to attract a restaurant which would need the water line. No, he's not attracting a restaurant now.
He want, he wants any tenant he can get.
Oh, okay.
He doesn't, he has a quick, on the planning board approval, it's for a quick-service restaurant, which is a Wendy's or McDonald's, also called quick service.
Okay.
But he's, no.
We got enough of those, thank you.
But...
That's my point.
Right. He'd happily rent it to a different restaurant if they approached him. Like, when the rumor mill was flying about Cracker Barrel, he was thrilled, but he said, "Nobody's contacted me."
Eric's Catering, he could go there.
ER Catering.
No, I think it's, it's Eric's Catering. I was told by a reliable source.
ER is where you're going to end up if you eat there. Waiting for the fair.
Karen, these numbers, you, what's that period that that covers?
July 1st through June, I believe, was June 10th.
June 10th this year?
Correct.
So is this fiscal year?
Correct, yes, yep.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'm good.
So now, with regards to Lee Fair, we've had our second or third meeting, I believe, last week. So last, so now we're the, you know, time crunching planning process. And we have a 501(c)(3) that is going to run the bingo. So it's going to be the daily, typical daily activities, then the dinner, and then there's going to be bingo from the end of dinner to the fireworks, and then the fair committee is going to sell ice cream, smorgasbord, like we did last year. Excuse me, as you know, the budget, we, the town gave us $4,000 for the fireworks, and they're 7,500. So last year, we had the full 8,000 budgeted, which, so it's in this current fiscal year. So there's $500 left over. So what the fair committee would like to do is use that $500 that was budgeted last year for fireworks towards this year's $3,500 balance. So then we only have to raise 3,000 for fireworks.
So is this in FY19?
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, so you want to carry over $500?
Yes.
Okay.
No, they're, the plan is to have a signed contract before June 30th.
I see.
Which will encumber the $500 from fiscal 19, use all of the $4,000 from fiscal 20, and fundraise the balance of $3,000.
And we're very comfortable that we can raise the $3,000. So as soon as you guys, I would ask that if you would please give me a motion to, for that 500, and then we can sign the contract to get the, for the fireworks and...
Is that included in your request?
No, I just threw this on her today.
I see, that's pretty sneaky.
Sorry. So that's what the fair committee would like to do, and then we have, we're pretty, very confident we can raise the $3,000 needed for the rest of the fireworks. We're not sure how the rest of the funding for the fair will go this year because a lot of our sponsors have given, a lot of our repeat sponsors have given money to other activities that are being held in town, so I'm in hopes that they'll still donate, but I can't guarantee anything.
Do you need our permission to have the bingo gambling thing?
I don't believe we do because it's a registered 501(c)(3), and it's considered a county farm fair. That's our read of the statute.
But we'll look at it again.
Yes.
I know we looked at it last year.
Anything new planned for the fair?
Bingo, that's, that was huge, finding somebody to run bingo.
But anything else?
Not as of yet, I don't think so.
Still having the car show and...
Yeah, the car show should be bigger.
Yeah?
Yeah, regular, we're trying to get other stuff, but it's hard. And then I noticed Barrington Days is the same day this year, and Caleb's, no, I'm sorry, not Barrington Days, Caleb's Country Store is celebrating 150 years of business that day.
What are the prizes for bingo?
I don't know, the, the, so it's a dog rescue that's doing it, and they're going, going to take over because we can't, by law, we can't be involved in it.
Right.
It has to be run by a 501(c)(3), so as I...
When you, when we talk about having kind of a tight budget, you've got to get, you know, some kind of prizes for...
They're doing all of that.
They're doing all of that.
Yeah. We can't, I, it's my understanding from the statute, we can't do any of that. So we told them we're not going to micromanage you, you guys are going to. And they're a good group.
So is Eric, Eric's Catering doing the food again this year?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Oh, he heard me, I could tell.
He's ignoring you.
I tell he's ignoring this one.
Anything else for Karen?
Would you guys mind making a motion for the $500, please?
Oh, can we do it when we do yours, or not?
When we do mine?
Aren't you asking us to encumber funds under 10A?
Yes, yeah, that's what the board wants to do.
Is that, because we're encumbering funds, we'll just keep it together?
Yeah, that's good.
We take our word for it that we'll do it under 10A?
Yep.
Town administration will...
You're on tape. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number six, Ruth Eifert, Labor Director.
So following the results of the March vote, the Lee Library trustees are looking for ways to maximize the library space and make it as flexible as possible. We've looked at the four buildings that make up the library, the 1896 Schoolhouse, 1974 Edition, which is where my office is, 1986 Edition, which is the children's room, and the 1996 Edition, which is the adult SPACs. Those newer buildings, those built in the 21st century, is that right? Are in good condition, and they were purpose-built for library shelving and library space use. The 1896 Schoolhouse, however, was built in 1896 and never intended for library shelving or space use. We've made it work over the years. What we would like to be... What we would like to be able to do is to maximize the flexibility of the use of the interior space. And in order to do that, we need to have a structural report and engineering plans for that building, the condition of that building. I think we've pretty much maxed out the ability of the floors to hold any more weight without doing something. We don't actually have a written proposal from MJS Engineering, we had them come and take a look. They were here maybe thirty minutes, forty minutes, just to do a cursory look. Um, they feel that it is possible to put some beams down in the basement of that building, and make it as sound as possible, and you really think, even at stack load. Which is a hundred and fifty pounds per square foot, I'm not envisioning putting stacks in there, but if we could shore up that flooring, so that it gives us the most flexibility of that space. His, his ballpark estimate for the actual engineering report was about fifteen hundred. We asked him for a non-binding estimate as to what the actual cost would be, if we were gonna actually do the structural supports. He said maybe twenty, could be ten, could be thirty.
Thousand.
So, thousand, yes, thousand, to have that work done. What we would like to do is just to go ahead and get the structural engineering report with a plan for how you could shore up the flooring to make it as strong as it can be. And then from that, we'll probably get some estimates, get the cost, and probably do an RFP after that. So that's what we're looking to do, and we're requesting that the trustees can pursue a structural engineering report, and to take the cost from the Lee Public Library building after we set a fund.
Questions?
Sir, just what's, what's under the eighteen ninety-six, is it cross?
The old vault, the vault that was built there for the town clerk, big cinder block corner.
Oh, yes.
There's a new furnace down there, um, and storage, our, our little water heater that's this size is in the corner.
Is there water issues down there at all?
No, that's where the water heater is, and the water issues we thought were issues was really just a leaky heater.
Okay, so there's no...
We had that fixed.
No problem with that whatsoever.
No, I think it's a good point we should move forward.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I don't see we're having any options, really.
Let's get more flexibility.
Do you guys have, have you discussed in terms of your overall plan, is this like phase one, or what are your...
Um, this is our first plan going forward, we, we wanna see if we can address some of those issues. I mean, if we got this building so that it was strong enough, to hold things, we might be able to maybe change some of the usages around. I mean, one wild idea I had was actually using that old schoolhouse for the children's room. Give them a little bit more room for programming, because right now the programming is all in the other basement. Um, that's a possibility, we might be able to shift some things around within our existing structure. And then if it came down to, we could possibly look at a small addition, we're not gonna be hampered by the inability to use that old schoolhouse.
I'm, I'm a little confused, Ruth, I thought that there was an effort underway to, what's the word, I'm looking. Refurbish or do some structural...
Do some renovations.
renovations to the, to the building. This is a, this is a piece of it, but, I mean, I don't think this, they, why don't we just say, here's what it's gonna take to renovate the building? Because this would be part of that cost, would it not?
Yes, it could be, but this, this would at least in the interim, until there was an actual plan for expanding, if there ever came to be one. This would at least allow us the most flexibility, so that during a construction phase, you could move things from A to B. We haven't addressed the structural issues of that building, because we haven't had a need to. Now that we know that we're not gonna be able to get any kind of expansion space for a while. This would give us the most flexibility going over the next five, five years, I would say.
So, are the trustees anticipating doing something to ask the voters this upcoming...
I don't believe so.
The other thing, just to be clear, you're, you're not requesting money from the Library Capital Reserve Fund, right? You're requesting from the other one.
Library Building Capital Reserve Fund.
Yeah, because that one you have to wait, this one you have to wait until...
The account that you are the spender of...
Which is the...
The Library Building... The Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund.
There we go.
All right.
I'm good with that.
We need a motion. All right, uh, I move to approve, um, uh, expanding, you said up to fifteen hundred, what do you...
It was a verbal amount.
Do you wanna make it...
So I don't know, I...
Two thousand, just...
Put a little cushion on there, since it was...
So I don't have to exceed?
Right, I moved to expand, uh, up to two thousand dollars, yeah, I don't have to exceed, uh, for doing a structural report for the library, Lee Library. And source of funds to be the library building...
Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund.
That's the one. Does that sound okay?
I hope John is listening.
That's correct.
Good, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Yeah.
Second?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Item number seven, it's got no...
About thirteen years ago, the state gave out grants to police and fire departments for new portable radios. That money has since dried up, they were working on interoperability for police and fire. Now they're still giving grants, but that's just to update the radio program itself. So, we've had to, over the years, try, try and buy new radios. The current ones that we got from that grant, we probably got about twenty-five of them. We have roughly eighteen to twenty, right now they're over thirteen years old. Four or five years ago, I asked to buy five radios, and we did purchase those, so now they're about five years old. And now we're actually at a point where the Motorola twenty-five hundred radios that we have from thirteen years ago are unsupported by Motorola, they don't make them anymore. So they're breaking, and we can't fix them. We have a couple of members that don't even have portables at this time, because we can't fix the ones that we do have. So I was asking the board if we could purchase five Motorola APX six thousand radios. The price is twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Every year we go to buy radios, they're getting more and more expensive, but the technology's changing as well. These radios come with a three-year warranty, they're rugged, definitely. So hopefully they'll last better in hard conditions. And they also have Bluetooth and Wi-Fi capabilities for the future, so... This portable that we're looking at, we're looking to get at least ten years out of it for the future, when the first that comes in. The new SEVA, SEVA, uh, airpack switches bar, those actually have Bluetooth in them, so we can use these radios. And it's just a key fob, they swipe on the airpack, and the regulator actually has a built-in microphone, so... All the outside noise that you usually have to talk outside of your mask with holding your microphone, it's not gonna go through, um, the actual regulator and go through the radio, so I can hear it better than other people.
How many, how many radios do you have?
Currently?
Yeah.
We have about twenty-three.
So we'll have five upgraded radios, but the other eighteen are gonna have to be replaced fairly soon?
Correct. So the plan that I looked at, we do need radios now, like I said, we have two people without radios. Our radios will bunch, bunch of officers, and some of the senior members have the four thousand radios that we got five years ago, so we'll drop those down to the firefighters and EMTs, we'll take the new ones. And then what we'd like to do probably in the future is...
Is five enough?
Five is all.
I mean, I'm just trying to avoid saying, two weeks from now, we have, we have X number of radios that go belly up on us, and, and again, you're, you're short radios for the people.
Five is all we can afford right now, through the fire department budget. Um, I did talk to them about lease own program, um, and I do have paid work downstairs. The lease own you can do for however many years you want to, um, we could do a three-year plan or a five-year plan, and you pay us ten percent of the money down upfront. And then you go into the lease programs every year, um, we'd have to pay, and I think, what we were working with numbers, was about twenty thousand dollars a year, for three years, to get all new radios for the whole apartment.
Okay, well, I'll, I won't beat it to death, but communications is a key issue, quickly, we can't let that...
Scott?
Paul, we got, Paul, we got on the Cory's question, is it, so you said you, what role is not supporting, how many of the units now?
Oh, twenty of the ones that we have now, the twenty-five hundreds, because they're thirteen years old, so after a time, they just start making them.
Are there third-party people out there that are supporting, do you know?
No, because they're not making parts.
Because they're not going parts.
Yeah, they're not making parts.
I guess you have a job ahead of you.
I have no problem with it. Source of funds is your operating budget?
Correct.
Is this also in the CIP at some point?
No. Each, the last time I brought it up to the CIP, it was because each item doesn't, uh, is, it's not five thousand dollars or more.
So the radios are twenty-two hundred dollars a piece?
What's a life expectancy?
What's that?
What's a life expectancy?
Ten years.
I would, they, they should be in.
I would love them to be in.
Because it, it's something that we should be planning, because that's an expense we should be planning for. It's not like, why, a box of papers.
Bullets, we should put them in, I just don't wanna yell it from my chair, because that's what I tell people.
The only question is, what was, does the original purpose, assuming you wanna use the fire equipment capital reserve fund, did the original purpose of that fund cover radios? Because these are handheld radios?
Correct.
So they're not in a fire truck?
So we'll have to look up the purpose of the fund, and the, and the revisit the CIP policy. And, and if it fits the purpose of fund, which I can see out of my per se vision that John Tappin's supposed to look up something. We can possibly have that in the CIP.
Well, even if it isn't, even if you can't use that trust fund or capital reserve fund for it, it's still an expense we need to plan for though. So even if it's, wherever we pay for it, it's gonna be paid for someplace, we should be planning for that, and that's like, a large expenses down the road at some point, it sounds like it's really close, so... I'd rather for us to be aware of it and plan for it, and we've got a planning process right now in the CIP, so if it doesn't fit it, maybe we need to tweak it a little bit more so.
I could buy more expensive radios, see if that five thousand...
That's not...
Don't, don't egg them on, please.
That's not what I'm asking.
Well, you could always put it in the operational budget, I mean, we...
Which you just declared.
We, we did this with the police cars, right?
Right.
It's in your operational budget, and every year, you replace one, right?
Correct.
So every year you replace a police car?
I replace a police car, but we transfer the radios.
Move the radios.
Right, he's just comparing.
Yeah, just comparing it in the sense, so we put this in the, you know, you know, every five years, in your operational budget, there's so many.
Yeah.
And we can make an inclusive, we already have a precedent in place.
John Tappin speaking as trustee of trust funds, uh, for the fire equipment, um, capital reserve fund, the purpose is capital reserve for equipment for the fire department. So, it's a piece of equipment that you take to fight a fire, it's fire equipment for the fire department.
But it's, just to be clear, there's no, no, that's Karen's question. Just to be clear, there's no money in the CIP for any kind of digital radios in there for...
For the fire department?
For anybody. Not, not for the police department either, right? Because you guys have...
No, his capital... I don't believe for radios, no, I know when he...
He's, he's saying no.
You transfer over, they transfer over the equipment from one car to the other, and no, there's nothing in for any other radios.
But, I guess, Chief, could I ask you the question?
Hey, thank you.
At some point you need to replace radios.
And I've just been replacing them, one or two, and just keeping up with it since we got all the ones through the grant. So I've been replacing them, a couple here, a couple there, when we added the new officer, I was able to buy one out of my operating budget, and kinda keep up with them that way. So that we don't, because I don't have the numbers that he has.
Right.
Uh, so it's easier for me to stay ahead of the curve, um, so that we're never really out of whack, uh, for maintenance and things like that.
So, could I ask the fire chief and Karen, since you're the representative for the CIP?
Yep.
To look at those particular things, and then maybe come back to us and let us know what the replacement should be, the replacement plan should be?
Well, I'm assuming, if there's twenty radios, they're not all the same age, right? I mean, they were purchased at different intervals, so some are older than others, or...
The ones we're replacing right now are thirteen years old, and that was from the grant, so they all came in all at once. But I asked the board five years ago to buy five of them, just like I am tonight, and those are the, the newest ones are five years old. So we have about twenty that are thirteen years, and five that are five years old.
Okay, I'm concerned about the thirteen-year-old ones.
So my proposal is every operational budget year, you put in money for five replacements. So over four years, you...
Rotate the whole, the whole...
It's gone through. It's just a thought.
And if we can use the CIP to track that, that would be great.
Right, and, and John just said we could use the fire equipment to buy them as well, yes, so we'll do that, absolutely.
Any other questions?
So we're gonna buy five, or we just...
I don't know, I'm gonna do a motion to see if we vote on it. So I move to authorize the fire chief to purchase five Motorola, geez, APX six thousand X E portable radios, as proposed by the Motorola Solutions Incorporated. With funding from, ooh, zero one point four two two zero one point seven five zero point zero zero, new equipment budget line.
I'm sorry, which one was it?
Let's just say it's the fire department operating budget, and the new equipment line. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
You should pass it.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Steve Wolf, on the board's plan to...
So I'll do the highway department one first, so... What I was afraid was gonna happen, happened with the guardrail on Gary Road, the speed of the roads too high to just put, um, lower speed end units on it. So we have to put the big ones that take hits from people going thirty miles an hour on. So, uh, the bid came back at nineteen six, sorry, nineteen three fifty, eleven thousand six hundred of it's just for four end units. The rest of the four hundred feet of rail isn't that much money. The end units are only twenty-nine hundred bucks a piece. So, what I'm asking is... To encumber what we talked about last time, which would utilize nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars of operating budget from this year and next year, and then... The remaining ninety-seven, seventy-three would come out of the highway road capital reserve fund.
I think it's the other way around. You have four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars left this year, and five thousand dollars...
Yeah, you're right, sorry, it'd be ninety-five seventy-seven out of the highway reserves capital reserve fund. But, that bid also includes, I can save fifteen, I think twelve to fifteen hundred, we take the guardrail down ourselves and dispose of the posts, which we would obviously do. So that, would end up being less than that.
My, my recommendation would be to grant the money that's on the cover sheet before you, in the event they measured wrong or something. And then if you can do some of the work yourselves and save some money, then that's so much the better.
All right, so I'm a little confused. So, the ninety-seven, seventy-seven is what you're requesting to be redraw from the highway roads and bridges capital reserve fund, is that correct?
No, nine thousand, yeah, nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven.
And where's the remaining ninety-seven, seventy-three coming from?
Four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three is from FY nineteen operating budget.
Highway department.
Highway. And five thousand is from the fiscal year twenty highway operating budget.
So we'll need to carry forward the four thousand seven hundred and seventy-three?
Well, we already have, or, as soon as we sign the contract, before it proves this, and we sign the contract, then we're all set.
Okay, can I ask you? So can I just read this, or do I have to put in the rest of this stuff?
No, you can just read the...
Oh, thank God. All right. I move to approve utilizing nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the highway roads and bridges capital reserve fund to replace the damaged and obsolete guardrail on Gary Road. Do I have a second?
Sir?
Any discussion?
Um, I, I do just wanna mention that I've had a couple of conversations with John Tappin as trustee... I, I do just want to mention that I've had a couple of conversations with John Tappin as trustee of trust, and I believe they met today and took up the request and approved the request. We should be all set.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and then on to the transfer station, I'll give you an update on the food composting program. I've got thirty-nine households signed up in the town hall, which makes forty buildings involved in the program, which is pretty good. Newmarket is currently has twenty-five signed up, and they're filling a ninety-six gallon tote a week, so I get more people signing up every day, so it looks like it's going pretty good. I, I ordered two eighty-gallon totes and six hundred bags last week. They came Friday, people started picking the bags up at the transfer station on Saturday. So, hopefully, was hopefully, on the twenty-ninth of June will be the first day people can start dropping off their compostable bags and composting Mr. Fox.
So, if we do similar utilization, you said ninety-six gallons, how much, how many pounds is that?
I don't know, I, I'll ask Rick, I didn't ask, I just asked him how, how much he was filling up a week and what he had.
Because that, that diverts from the MSW, which means we don't have to pay to haul them.
I think there still is a fee to haul it, and what I think they explained when they were here like a month and a half ago, is you, once you get over a certain weight, you start saving money. So, I'm hopeful we get over that weight, and I think the more people that see it, the better. I got a sign-up sheet at the farmer's market, I figured, well, it's outside my building, might as well put one there and see if I get people.
I was going to say, how are we getting the word out? So, I got a. The place committee getting the word out, too?
I posted on neighborly.
There's an ad on the TV at the transfer station that Denise did, there's a sign-up sheet at the transfer station.
It was in the e-cryer, was it?
Yeah, it's in the e-cryer, I think that's where most of the people have seen it, is e-cryer. And more people, I get two or three emails a day with people signing up, so.
And how do you have the containers arranged? Do they pull up on the outside?
No, so, they're on wheels, so whoever comes to pick them up can take them where they are and wheel them to where they need to go, so right now, until I can come up with a better place to put them, the door that's right by where you dump your SW to go outside, they're right outside that door. That way, they throw their bag, they just open the door, they go outside and dump them with the totes.
So, you've got, how many did you say signed up, thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
How many?
Thirty-nine citizens plus the town hall, so forty.
And how many can you have?
Two hundred, is I think what the pilot program said, but I don't see why we can't take more than that. If we start taking a lot more than that, we might have to buy some more totes. But, the more totes we buy and they fill them, it's.
How much are the totes?
They're eighty dollars apiece. After I see the totes that I got, I will buy them from them again, I'll go to, I go to Home Depot or Lowe's and buy them cheaper. These ones say, Mr. Fox, I want them in compostable food, those are the only difference other than going to the store and buying them, so. And, we're going to start on the swap shop parking lot on Wednesday. I have AAA fence coming in to close the gap, finally. I talked to them today, I signed a contract with them today, that was thirty-one hundred dollars that's coming out of.
Are they going to fix the rest of the fence too, or just the section?
No, just the section, get us back in compliance, so we don't get in trouble if the state shows up, and I'll work. I figure if I can do a hundred and twenty feet of it a year, I might be able to get all the way around it and go from there. Because the hundred, it's a hundred and sixteen feet is the hole right now, so it's thirty-one hundred. And having, the swap shop's an issue. Every time I've gone in there since I started in there, there's been things in there that should not be in there. There's been paint cans in there, which are signs to say no. The fluorescent white bulbs that go on the ceiling once, stick tubes have been in there, I took them out, told them they can't be in there anymore, went in the next day, they had more back in there. Today I went in and there were two smoke detectors in there which aren't supposed to be in there, and there's bags of stuffed animals on the floor in there which aren't supposed to be in there. The stuffed animals won't get us in trouble, but all the other things they said will get us in trouble if they aren't in there, so with your blessing, I'd like to close the swap shop for thirty days, go through the whole thing and try to train them better on what's supposed to be in there and what's not supposed to be in there. And then there's other issues whether, that we're going to talk about in there. That's it for now that I can talk about here.
If you're closing it, would that be effective immediately? Or you got a target date?
I just, I, I just close at July first, or Ju- June twenty-ninth, which should be the first Saturday. And then it'll be closed the whole month of July, over at the end of July. Have your problem, let's move forward.
Mr. Brown?
I'm on it.
Anything else, Mr. Paul? Thank you. And number nine, Larry Kindred, the recreation commission chair, please.
We will have copies of two proposals that we received, planning for the pavilion. And going over the needs for that, based upon what we were originally looking at, we sort of changed course on how we wanted to arrange the electric for that. Originally, we were looking at putting in LED strip lighting and fixtures on either end to act like stage lighting. Problem is that once we put it in, we're stuck with it. So, we opted for more op, for more flexible program by putting in boxes along the length of the outer beams, the full length of the sixty feet, and then coming across and putting electrical outlet boxes on the crossmembers. Where you have pre-switched, pre-switched electrical circuits in there, which would give us what we want. That way, we can go purchase for a lot less money at Lowe's or Home Depot the exact lighting that we want for that time, and then it can just be plugged in, moved, or whatever, for whatever needed to be used within the pavilion. I kind of thought that was a better route to go than to put in more permanent lighting that would have less flexibility. So, that's what both of these proposals reflect, and that's why you don't see anything in there for the actual lighting fixtures, because we're not really sure what we want yet or what's going to be needed. But, it could be purchased, it could be purchased reasonably. Like I say, through Lowe's or Home Depot. So, there are two proposals there, one from the air electric, and both of them are very similar to each other with the specifications we wanted. The air electric is at twenty-eight hundred dollars, and the CR Smith is at thirty-five, eighty-five. And you'll see notes on there, one of the differences on the Smith proposal is that there would be timers on the circuits, so that we can set the timers. They would be locked up in the electrical shed, and that way, we don't have to worry about somebody forgetting to turn off the electric. We have donations of wire, circuit breakers, junction boxes, and so on, being provided by Jim Banks for that project, which is included in the CR Smith proposal. So, those are the two that we've received at this point.
So, the extra cost with the Smith is only because of timers? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I, I don't know exactly why the cost is higher, that's what this proposal came in at. There are a couple more, there are eighteen receptacles in the Smith proposal versus only fourteen, I believe, in the air proposal.
And how many do you need?
Well, the eighteen would be good, that's kind of what, I mean, I met with both parties and we went over everything, and Jim Banks had some very good recommendations as to how to place those boxes and why we needed the extra ones.
And, these funds are coming from where?
Well, that was the problem.
Okay. Let's work on that.
No, we had hoped to have funds available within our budget, but then, once we got the finalized numbers, we don't have anything left in our budget for that. And, so that's the stumbling block at this point, putting in lighting, because the rec commission doesn't have the funds in there. And of course, the new budget was reduced, so we're looking at issues next year with programming, because it was reduced so much. So, we're going to hopefully get some more sponsorships for the programming for next year, but we're not going to have the funds available as we thought to put into the way.
Can I make a couple of comments about budgeting? So, right now, the rec operating budget has about nineteen hundred dollars in it, the operating budget. The revolving fund, I think, has about five thousand dollars in it. I don't believe that you can use the revolving fund for capital costs. Because it's intended to be for programs. But, if we moved, and I think it's about twenty-three hundred dollars of the musician costs from the operating budget, take it out of the revolving fund, then that would free up twenty-three hundred dollars for, for the electrical project.
Yeah, I tried to get a handle on how many of the musicians have been paid so far, and I think that there are some that haven't been paid.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight have been paid.
Out of how many?
I don't have that list here of how many.
So, the e-cryer?
List is, who's paying?
Who's been paid.
So, where did the donations that you got for the musicians, where did that money go?
They, they came from sponsors.
Revolving.
So, there might at this point actually be more than five thousand dollars.
As I understand, there's about six thousand in the revolving fund at this point. But again, we were looking to utilize that for next year's programming, because we were cut so badly.
And Julie? Do we have money in a contingency fund?
Well, I, we have less than two thousand dollars each in the planning and zoning legal budget and in the general legal budget, and I know that there are more bills coming. And we are going to try to hold the contingency funding for that.
Reason I bring it up, I feel this is, I think it's an important issue. It might be tied to the recreational area, but it is an important issue that we have electricity junction boxes down here for lights and so forth. Is there any other place we could tap into?
I would have to, I could take a look and see whether the building operating budget has anything left. I don't know, it's the end of the year, so.
The thing is also, you're getting an electricity.
Oh, I understand.
There's additional expense going to come at some point for the lighting procedures, right?
True.
And we don't know how much that is.
But, I guess I don't want to see the project stalled, I'd like to see it unfold, so I'm trying to find a way. Here's a comment back there.
In my grounds maintenance budget, for the rest of this fiscal year, I think I got almost two thousand dollars in it. And that would go toward, and we spend that money on Little River Park.
Well, I guess first we need to know which proposal we're going to go with, because they're, you know.
I don't have enough to pay for, or do I have some?
Pretty different.
And we have some, like, again.
So, are we?
I'm not quite sure exactly what we have, what we can have left over in this budget.
Well, you said eleven, right, Denise?
Did I, did I understand correctly, Larry, is there, these, these two proposals, they, they, they do what you want it to do? Or is there more coming down, so more that has to be done even after this is?
The only thing that has to be done is choosing some lighting fixtures, but like I say, that's small, that's a small amount of money, then, and we can plug in anything. I mean, a lot of us have the lighting.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out whether you are going to have a requirement for some more funds in order to get everything done after, after we award these proposals.
Not with regard to this year. Okay, and having suitable lighting for this year's program. Okay, next year, we have to take a look and see, after we get some experience of the lighting that we need this year.
Got you.
Then we come back and say, okay, these are additional pieces that we'll need to complete what we like to have. But, we're kind of, you know, we're not lighting specialists, and we're not really sure what, what's going to be needed, but this gives us the flexibility to do what we want.
Understand.
And when you say next year, you mean two thousand twenty, or next year is in July first, two thousand nineteen?
No, is it?
Fiscally or?
No. Not, not this year's program, I'm looking, I'm looking at two thousand twenty's program.
So, starting July, this July?
No, he's talking accounting here, but he.
No, next, next year.
So, fiscal twenty?
I mean, once, once we find out this year, running the programs, what we need for lighting, and there's a number of us that can supply what we need without expense.
July, next year.
We really need fourteen or eighteen outlets?
We do, for flexibility, yes.
That's why I'm, eighteen's better than fourteen.
Exactly.
Brace yourself.
Uh-oh. Yes, Eric, you have a comment?
Well, I got a couple of questions and, I guess, a suggestion. I realize that this is sort of late in the game, but the question is, what do you need for light there? I mean, how many, how many, how many days a year are you going to need lights in there?
Okay, we're, we're basically looking at the fall season, because of the getting dark earlier, so we need some lighting in there.
But, doesn't the park close at dusk?
But, the, but the music program goes on to eight-thirty.
So, how, when is that done?
That finishes up in September.
So, that's once a week for how many weeks after?
Well, you got four.
August, it starts getting dark at eight o'clock in August. Gets dark at seven oh-two on the day of fair. So, my suggestion is that instead of putting in all those receptacles right now, put in conduit line up to somewhere in the park, pavilion on the wall, and have three different junction boxes or receptacle boxes on the end. You can extend later on if you have to, but if any of you remember from the fair last year, the tent, this is what we used for lights on the tent. One on each side, one down the middle, and these are twenty-five foot lengths.
You just happen to have those with you?
I just have them. I just bought these.
For a month now.
I bought these a little while ago, because we had been borrowing the ones that we used for the tent, but those went back to our mom, and so, these are three dollars and forty-nine cents for a twenty-five foot length. And I found a place on eBay where they're a dollar ninety-nine for a twenty-five foot length.
And you run extension cords, where do you, where's?
You could plug five of these together, so that's a hundred feet.
Powered from the outlet that's by the pavilion?
Plug them into an outlet.
Yes, Julie.
So, if you've got one on each end, if you've got one on, one on each side of the pavilion, on the end and one in the middle. A string down both sides, kind of string down the middle, and if that's not enough light, just put out twenty-four watts of electricity.
From the man who has a blue top for a roof.
It's gray.
Gray top for a roof, excuse me.
So, so, the point is that these are twenty-four watts, but then these are incandescent. If you use the same LED light, it's a nine-watt LED light, these are a dollar ninety apiece, the incandescent, a hundred and fifty feet of incandescent is thirty-seven dollars.
You mean LEDs?
Right, I mean for LEDs, and so, even if you put two of these up on each side, so you had nine of these sections to go the sixty-foot length.
Hook down.
That's, that's thirty-six dollars.
There is a big difference, I will say, I don't know if you've experienced this in your own homes, a big difference in Christmas lights between regular old lights and the LEDs.
The question is, what, how much light do you need in there?
No, 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 it's not about the light, it's about the draw, I, if you're going to go that route, I'm.
Well, the LED, I mean, do you want to use the LED? Well, the LED, I mean, if you want to use the LEDs, if you use, if you used eighteen of these, nine, nine.
Save them, Tom, please.
I don't want them.
I can see these just being torn out.
Well, no, if you put them up in staple, they're not going to get torn down. String them along the sides. I'm not talking about hanging them. You could staple along the wall.
Were you hanging them?
That's in my guess, or is it? You can't reach them if they're stapled, they're going to be in there. But it seems to me that we ought to at least get down there, plug them in, and see what they're going to look like, and then go from there, instead of spending that kind of money on something that's only going to be used a few times a year. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Right. Can I ask Mr. Kinberg a question? What's the purpose of putting lights down there? Is it just for general illumination? Are you putting two lights on?
Two, two both. One is general illumination if they get dark. The other is to put spotlights onto a staging area where the performers would be, and that would be on both ends, because we're not sure which end we're actually going to, I think, move to.
I have a follow-on question. So you have these receptacles that you can plug in or switch, right? You can plug other things into these receptacles. There doesn't have to be lights, does it?
Absolutely.
So that gives us more opportunity, flexibility. So if you wanted to plug in a guitar amplifier, so you can play electric guitar, so we're not just talking lights. So I want to move the fact that we can do a lot more with those receptacles than just lights.
Exactly.
Okay.
But having three switched circuits would allow us to move the light, control the lighting around also. And we can plug in, we don't have to have, we may find that we only need two LED spots to illuminate up into the rafters to provide the light that's necessary. You know, again, we don't know until we actually start doing it.
I assume Ms. Rossi wants to speak?
Yeah. So speaking for the fair, having lights in the pavilion and having extra receptacles in the pavilion, even if I know it's just one day a year, would be a great help, because Jim Banks is lovely and donates his extension cords and his time, but they're all just trip hazards. So if we have some plugs in the ceiling and some lights, it's going to be so much nicer and so, I mean, three thousand dollars for lights goes a long way if somebody trips and falls and gets hurt.
Plus, if we put in the receptacles, this still allows Eric's catering to put up the LEDs.
His string of lights for a dollar and then they drive five hours to get.
Five hours to get another.
Thank you.
Larry, one other question. Why didn't Ayers bid on eighteen? Or the other one? Did the?
That might have been my mistake on that one. He and I met, and we talked about the concept of doing this.
Three thousand dollars for twenty years.
You know, Jim Banks is, he thinks everything through a lot more detailed, and that's where they came up with the eighteen.
If you tie twenty years, three thousand dollars.
Actually, the Smith, because of the timers and the eighteen. Question is, are we going to get the funds?
I suggest we take it out of our budget. We aren't down in terms of health insurance, right? There's tens of thousands.
I don't know where we're going to end up landing with that.
Where did you, where did you live? What we have left?
Well, I didn't realize that we have, we still have three band members, or three bands to pay, which is, could be as much as a thousand or more dollars.
How about if we, like you said, how about if we take that out of, excuse me, if we take that out of the revolving?
Yeah.
And do it that way?
Right, if you moved, and we can play around with the exact numbers, but if you moved all of the band expenses out of the operating and into the revolving.
We can only do that to the rest of the band.
Then, oh, just the ones you haven't paid?
Because we've already paid.
Well, that doesn't matter.
Oh, it doesn't?
No. No, no, we can move, we can move those expenses. So if we did that, I think there would be enough money in the rec operating.
We'll leave it up between the town administrator and Larry to work it out.
So we have to say where sources of funds are, so where are you going to expend it from? Just the operating budget?
Well, just say the rec commission operating budget and the highway operating budget and the town building operating budget.
Oh, my goodness.
We'll cobble it together.
That's, I like cobbling, that's good.
Creating financing.
And I would like to go with the Smith one.
Mr. Brown? He's suggesting. Okay. Give me that. Okay, I move to authorize the town administrator into a contract with CR Smith Electric LLC, and it costs not to, three thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars to install overhead lighting.
Receptacles.
Receptacles.
Well, purely just receptacles.
Receptacles. Overhead receptacles in the pavilion, Little River Park, and utilize funds from the rec commission revolving fund, the town highway.
No, the rec operating.
Rec operating?
Yeah.
The highway department operating budget? And what's the third one then?
The buildings.
Town buildings? Town buildings.
Operating budget.
Operating budget. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Larry. When's it going to be done?
When do you want it done?
Soon as possible.
December seventh.
For the fair, yes. Item number ten, you're the other town administrator.
So Warren Article V from 2018 was the funding for the study in the preliminary engineering design, preliminary architectural designs for the town center project. I believe there is a balance of sixty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents remaining from the original two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You may recall that that Warren article also had funds for hazardous material mitigation and demolition of the parish house. And right now, we don't know yet what is going to happen with the parish house. So my recommendation is for the board to encumber the remaining funds, which you can do and utilize for another year, to be used to do the demolition of the parish house and the hazardous material mitigation if we need to. Otherwise, if that's, if you don't encumber these funds, and that's the direction we go in, then we don't have the funds to do it. Or we're, again, scrambling to find the funds to do it.
So we're better off covering those funds just because?
That's my recommendation.
And if we don't use them?
And if you don't use them, they, they're sitting in the unassigned fund balance.
I have no problem.
Mr. Brown?
Slaying.
Do you have more than that in terms of encumbrance? Is that the only?
Oh, Ms. Rossi wanted to secure the five hundred dollars from.
So it's only those two?
For the fireworks.
How about if we do two motions? You want to combine them? Two motions, you want to combine them, or just do one, or what?
Just do the one.
Just do the one? All right. I move to encumber sixty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-six cents for Warren Article V of the 2018 for additional fiscal year until June 30th, 2020, and also to encumber five hundred dollars from the fireworks authorized in 2019.
Right, in the operating budget.
In the operating budget.
Is there a limit on how long you can encumber funds?
One year.
One year?
Sure.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything else?
Just wanted to mention to the board that I am going to be at the municipal managers' conference from Wednesday afternoon through Friday of this week.
All right. Item number eleven, I move to accept the consent gendered as presented. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Things decide.
Is it much?
Wow, is it much?
Tommy, do you think those chairs are real? And Jamie?
Move to enter non-public session, perhaps CRSA 91-A colon three, motion number two, items A and C. Do I have a second?
Second.
No.
Mr. Brown? Yes? Motion passes. I move to seal the non-public meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number fourteen, the Selena's International Business, anybody have any? No? TCVC meets on Wednesday, 4:30.
Well, you know, I listened to the discussion of what we had before about the possibilities. I'm not enthused about moving with the parish house. I just want to put that on the floor. Just interested.
I'm sorry, you're not what?
Interested in trying to incorporate the parish house as part of the municipal building. I'm looking for a single building by itself. Parish house can fend for itself. So I just, well, I'm putting that on the floor.
That's not in our charge. Our charge has three, so.
Yes, I understand.
So, okay.
I'm just looking at the point that it should be a standalone building, and parish house is a separate issue.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.